Good evening and welcome to the March 11, 2024 work session of the Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. Tonight, we're going to revisit or re-jump into the retool Gaithersburg process, and I'm going to hand it over to Rob Robinson to get started.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the Council, members of the Planning Commission. As the Mayor mentioned, this is our second of our two joint work sessions leading up to the public hearing for retool our comprehensive zoning ordinance rewrite. Again, joining me at the table this evening from our consultant team Zonco is Mr. Joe Helferdy and my co-project manager, Community Planning Manager Greg Mann. Before I turn it over to Joe real fast, I sort of want to lay out sort of what staff's expectations for tonight is. We really want to get clear guidance on changes, tweaks, try to vet as much stuff as possible. We gave you a really comprehensive packet. There was a lot of material in there. What we want to do is try to, as much as possible, have a finished product heading into the joint public hearing April 15th. I do want to announce, though, that doesn't mean the records are open, comments can still be received after tonight. Even through the public hearing process, further edits to retool could occur. But really, this evening, based upon what we presented to you in October, what we presented to you two weeks ago, based upon the comments in the record now, and you saw noted in the slides, our proposed changes, we're looking for consensus and direction on how to make the changes at this stage. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe, and he's going to take it from here.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you all for having me again. We'll keep it shorter this time, I promise.
We'll see about that.
I'll keep it shorter. So for our agenda for this evening, first, we're going to start with a quick engagement update, which there's content in your packet. We'll walk through what some of that is. Then we have a few items that are follow-ups from our prior joint work sessions specifically on parking, accessory dwelling units, CBD floating zone, and lighting. And then lastly, we have a brief overview of some of the changes we anticipate making already from comments received and just our continued review of this document, as well as feedback we've heard from you all, that would be incorporated into the next draft that you see prior to the joint public hearing. So as you may recall, back in October, we had a first draft of the engagement report that was given to you all in your packets. It summarized everything we had done up until that point, both our Zonco and working with city staff to solicit input and feedback on the project. That first report outlined everything from our first initial kickoff meeting, all the digital tools that were used, websites, surveys, email lists, and continued communication, as well as the outcomes of our virtual meetings to describe the content of his diagnostic report, and the countless focus groups that we had with everyone ranging from attorneys to developers to residents. At that time, we had also given an update on the community leaders, I think it was breakfast, that occurred in September, as well as an update on the bi-weekly steering committees. You'll note that there was a focus group, which we did not include the notes of at that time, which are included in your packet for today. The meeting happened too close to the joint work session, and the notes just didn't make it in. So that was a residence focus group. You'll see those comments in your packet today. So since then, as of March, we've continued providing opportunities for the public to provide comment, starting with the creation of a dedicated public phone line, which provides the public the ability to provide comment directly to city staff through phone. We've continued to use the email addresses that folks who subscribed to receive updates, including announcements on when the draft text was made available, as well as the annotated summary. We've continued to provide updates through our website. And also, you'll see in the packet, the Community Leaders Engagement Workbook. So this was the document that was the outcome of the Community Leaders Meeting in September. It was a tool that provided a very high-level, plain-language summary of the proposal, as well as prompts for community leaders to be able to engage their constituents and be able to provide that feedback directly back to us here. Obviously, we've released the draft zoning ordinance and the annotated summary, which you've all already received. It was approximately three weeks prior to the last joint work session, as well as an additional follow-up focus group with the land use attorneys group, who were actually the first folks who were engaged on this, as they have the most intimate working knowledge of the code, and they've provided feedback as well. So as far as the technical components here go, we're going to start with parking. At the prior joint work session, we were asked to talk a little bit about how we arrived at the parking requirements that were in this code, as well as some of the nuance of how that parking might work practically for developments here in Gaithersburg. So how we typically arrive at our parking requirements, it really depends on the community. In this instance, we conducted a review of the established parking rates currently today in Gaithersburg, as well as utilization for several existing projects. We also like to look within the region at what rates are being required in other places, just since they would be more likely to have the same geographic factors, socioeconomic factors and such. And then we also talked about parking quite extensively, a number of the focus groups ranging from the development community to residents themselves. Within that feedback we received at focus groups, there were a few larger notes that we really took to heart as we were putting together this particular revised parking proposal. First, the need for parking to reflect the evolving nature of commercial businesses. And this is true now, I think, more than it probably has been in any of our lifetimes, where we've learned a lot of lessons in the last several years, especially due to COVID. People's business models have changed, and in many instances, our parking in the way that we require parking, calculate parking, has stayed the same for decades. We also talked a bit about implementation of EV charging, specifically how it would align with regulations that are not being imposed specifically by Gaithersburg. We received comments on the need for flexibility in determining the requirement. So not just what the requirements were themselves, but how it would actually be determined, and how would it be able to support a broader range of uses in a given development or throughout the city. Along those same lines was the need for updates to parking that reflected employment trends. I think we know now that the idea of someone going to an office five days a week is not necessarily built into the business model of every single business. We know that different employers may have different spatial needs than a similar use may have had only 10 or 20 years ago. And then lastly, taking into account shifting demographics, as well as proximity to transit, things that are often overlooked when we have a parking requirement that's based on something from several decades ago. So starting with the comparison from neighboring jurisdictions, we, again, we like to keep it local, since parking is often a very local matter. So we took a look at Montgomery County itself, neighboring Rockville and Frederick, as well as Vienna, Virginia, to the south, which is also a client of Zonco with a code that was adopted only very recently. So in looking at the requirements, we found that the residential parking rates, as well as the retail commercial parking rates, were generally aligned amongst all of these places. Minor differences here and there, but proposed rates, as well as the rates in these four places, were all generally the same, give or take small, smaller factors. But where we, I think, really focused our effort, and where I think you'll see the biggest benefit to the goals of the city, is specifically with related to employment-generating uses. So the proposed Gaithersburg code has a far more flexible parking requirement specifically for these employment uses, such as life sciences, the artisan manufacturing, industrial, and certain professional service businesses. Within the code itself, it was harder for us to really make an apples-to-apples comparison between certain things, such as the newly-created multi-tenant commercial districts. I think we talked about this in the prior joint work session. We'll talk about it in a bit more depth in a second, but it's not a tool that's quite as widely used. Most places are still depending, their parking on the individual uses, not necessarily the size of the multi-tenant building. And in a similar fashion, one of the objectives that we went through with the revisions of the parking ordinance was to make it simple and easy to enforce. So a lot of neighboring jurisdictions still use requirements that are based on per employee or per bed or per seat in an auditorium. These requirements are just a little bit more cumbersome to actually enforce, harder to understand for decision-makers, as well as the public. So the proposed code, the majority of the uses that are within the parking chart are really just going on a square-footage basis. So you can see here, the full analysis for all of the neighboring jurisdictions is in your packet. We did take an excerpt for the purpose of this presentation, specifically as it related to the employment-generating non-residential uses. So in the green, you can see the Gaithersburg select uses that have been called out, and then how it compares to those other areas. So the reddish-pinkish tint are where the rate is higher in the other jurisdiction. The blue is where the rate is lower in the other jurisdiction. The lighter blue is, we couldn't evaluate because that particular place didn't have a standard, or the standard was the same. And then the yellow, it's harder to ascertain in that there is a variable rate being used dependent on, especially at the county level, where there's varying zones that may determine the parking requirement. So you can see here specifically, as we're looking at the industrial uses, the retail uses, and the professional business uses, Gaithersburg's proposed code, as put forward before you today, is far more flexible. And again, this is in direct response to what we heard from the folks who are building these types of facilities, commercial developers, life science institutions. And similarly, at the shopping center level, again, this was harder to really compare outside of Gaithersburg, but within Gaithersburg, we took a look at 26 shopping centers constructed in the last decade?
More than a decade.
More than a decade. And as you'll recall, the method that we had put forward really broke these out into three size categories, small, medium, and large, rather than the individual uses themselves. And really, the objective there was to make it easier to re-tenant these facilities into the future, make it easier for businesses to locate into an existing commercial center without having to worry about creating any parking issues, and really modernize the requirements to reflect the more modern need of a multi-tenant shopping center. So in looking through these 26 shopping centers, you'll see that 23 of them resulted in a reduction from what was provided today. Three of them had a minor increase. I think the important note here is that that reduction and the percentages you see before you are not necessarily the reduction in the required parking for that development, but rather the provided parking. As you know, the zoning is establishing a minimum for parking requirements, and individual developers are able to provide beyond that to an extent to meet their particular business model. So in looking through this analysis, you could see that specifically for the smaller shopping centers, so these are under 50,000 square feet, 10,000 to 50,000 square feet, that's where the greatest amount of flexibility is really being provided. And then there's still additional flexibility for medium and larger facilities, but at a reduced rate. And this is really important, in that parking is often the biggest detriment to small commercial development. So providing this flexibility should open up opportunities for more creative site planning and varying tenant needs, especially on smaller sites. So beyond the parking requirements, there are a few other creative tools in the proposed zoning code beyond that table that really start to let both applicants, as well as use decision-makers, really get into the nuance of a project, not just based on the particular size or what the particular use is. So the first of those things is this concept that we've introduced, which is about the mix of parking spaces, or specifically the type of parking space. The current zoning code just says parking space is a parking space. If you build one parking space, you have met one of your requirement. But we tried to create a tool here that allowed for the city to either incentivize the types of parking that it believes it needs, or allows applicants to provide the type of parking that may be better suited for their particular development. So you can see here in the red highlighted box, that's highlighting electric vehicle stalls and pickup and drop-off stalls, where in the proposed text, those are valued at one and a half parking spaces. So if you had to provide three parking spaces, one could provide instead two electric vehicle stalls. But to make sure that this didn't create a loophole where folks can come and potentially underpark, we've also built in a safeguard that ensures that either the Planning Director or the Planning Commission, dependent on the type of action being sought, would have the ability to determine the appropriate mix of spaces, just so someone doesn't come in and install entirely pickup and drop-off, or entirely electric, and underpark their And then last, on parking, waivers and modifications. So obviously, these existed to some extent within your current code. I think our approach was to keep what worked and improve it, really giving strength to both staff and the Planning Commission in how those decisions are made, as well as add some other new tools. So first, the minor waivers, which were previously determined as being 10% either plus or minus the required parking. Those have been retained, but clarified to also put a hard stop at 35 spaces. So this is just to say that there is a certain number of spaces that may be within 10%, but could have such an impact that it really should have a higher level of discretion in viewing it. Similarly, the shared parking scheme that was in the current code was retained, but updated to reflect all of the new use categories and use groups for parking specifically. The BRT parking reduction is a new policy that was included, and again, it came directly out of what you're hearing in focus groups, and the need to actually have parking respond to transit, where a reduction of up to 15% of the required parking for non-residential developments, except in a floating zone, for any site within approximately a quarter-mile of an existing BRT station can be sought. And then lastly, the Planning Commission's parking waivers to both reduce and increase parking. These were retained, but we improved the findings to, namely, to require that, especially in the case of the parking reduction, that analysis is conducted that demonstrates that there is, in fact, need for reduction. This is something we heard directly from staff, from our steering committee, and was effectively incorporated such that that is now a requirement in seeking that action, as well as additional findings that an applicant can or would need to meet for that decision to be made. And then the last part of this is, in addition to allowing the parking requirement itself to be altered, we built in a tool that would allow for the Planning Commission to also waive other components of that parking ordinance. So this might be something as simple as the width of a drive aisle at a very specific point, a tree requirement, things that respond to natural features, or things that respond to existing curb cuts elsewhere on other properties. It's just another creative planning tool to allow for the rules to be used in such a way that they create superior projects at the discretion of the Planning Commission.
So I'm now going to take over with accessory dwelling units. Two weeks ago, there were some questions. Once again, the DA's had requested, again, once again, we introduced to the public the background. So this first slide, an ADU obviously is a small residence that shares a single-family lot with a larger primary dwelling. What makes an ADU different than an old traditional granny suite or something like this? It has to have all three elements, a kitchen, sanitation, and a bedroom, and that's really what makes it an additional dwelling unit. As you can see on the slide, and this was great, we included in the packet the great AARP background report, talking about best practices and everything. There's three different types. There's detached, attached, and then there's interior. So interior is conversion of a basement that has a walkout basement into that. In addition is, the detached is when you have one, sometimes you see them in the Kent Lynch, those separated ones. And the attached is when you have an attached garage and somebody builds above it. So those are really the three types. I think, and Councilmember Wu brought up last work session, hey, why are these allowed? And why did you allow them in all the residential zones? Well, what you're going to find as we walk through this, it's really each neighborhood and zone has housing that may accommodate it and may not. So really, the way we've crafted this ordinance going forward is you have to meet all the standards. So it's really not for us to say, these guys can have it, these guys can't. The regulations and the zoning ordinance are going to be the limiting factor. So the first one we had is, we're cool if you want to convert an existing part of your house, and some people want to think about it with garages, but you still have to maintain all the required parking. So if you want to convert your garage in a single-family neighborhood, that's fine, but you still have to have two parking spaces for the primary dwelling on the lot, and one parking space for the ADU. So this is why we were trying to explain, it's self-limiting on where these will actually occur. So how do we get to our ADU stuff? There's a lot of academic discussion, as you saw in the packet, but we brought this really down. This started with the housing element, and we began by researching what are the best practices, but it was really the surveys that gave us insight. And of course, we asked every focus group and highlighted in the packet where all the focus group notes leading to this. Why I put this survey on the screen is, you'll be able to see the rational nexus to what we're proposing in retool with this survey. So a lot of the concerns that we heard, proximity to neighbors, we talked about last work session, the setbacks that we're requiring for these for detached, parking concerns, we require one off-street parking space, concerns with being used as short-term rentals, we explicitly preclude ADUs from being used as short-term rentals. Physical appearance, height, massing, we put in those restrictions. Certain things, school overcrowding, we really can't address. That's not for us. It's really more at the county level, what they're going to do with impact taxes. But as Councilmember McNulty brought up last week, there's conflicts with HOA regulations, and as we said, zoning doesn't address those. A community can establish it's under its HOA regulations, whether or not they want to allow things like ADUs, home-based businesses, short-term rentals, et cetera. Our role is to provide zoning guidance, especially for the non-common ownership communities, et cetera. So I mentioned last, two weeks ago, again, from the housing element, we had this goal, promote or create opportunities for a variety of housing types, and in that was perform ongoing reviews of land use zoning regulations and processes for barriers or obstacles retool, and study and potentially allow ADUs in specific single-family areas. So going back to Councilmember Wu's question, why we allowed them in our Euclidean residential zone or residential areas, because the way the ordinance is structured, it's going to be self-limiting. So it's not going to be allowed everywhere, but there is a potential even within a block, you may have one house that can accommodate one and one that can't. So it really wasn't for us to begin picking winners and losers at the zoning level. Let the ordinance play out. So as an adaptable form, I just wanted to put again, what we heard and what the literature says, and the next slide will show that our survey, going back to the housing element, actually verified all of these. ADUs facilitate multigenerational housing or housing for a higher caregiver. They can provide rental income to homeowners. They can provide a practical option for affordably-priced rental housing. They can help older residents remain independent. And ADUs foster equity by opening up neighborhood options that would otherwise be unaffordable. So this is about school districts and things like that. So again, there's a lot of things that are done. And then, as I mentioned, going back to the housing element, one of our surveys, we asked, 76% said it can provide housing for relatives. 66% said it provides more affordable housing options. Only 26% of respondents said there's no benefits to ADUs. So obviously, the vast majority of people that took this when we were going into the housing element, recognized now the potential benefit of ADUs, which honestly, candidly, we've talked about, eight years ago, may not have been true, but the world has sort of changed. So taking all of that, what we developed were these standards. One ADU is permitted per lot regardless of type, so you can't build a detached one and do a conversion. You only get one ADU per lot. The lot parcel or track must meet all the minimum lot size requirements, and that includes setbacks and height restrictions and everything else. So you don't get to circumvent. You may be able to say, hey, you get more than one dwelling on a lot, but all the other stuff, the impervious lot coverage standards that we have, all of that stuff still must be in play. The detached ADUs are only permitted in the side and rear yards. We don't want them in the front. The detached must provide a minimum setback of 10 feet, if you remember that survey question. The concern was impacts upon neighbors. May not exceed 800 square feet, as I mentioned two weeks ago. The 800 square feet was developed because that's the standard size of a one-bedroom apartment in the city of Gaithersburg. So this is realistic. These aren't meant to be a McMansion, a duplicate, and house a family of six. These are really targeted to a certain demographic, the requirement of one additional parking space, and as we said, the concern coming out of the surveys and the focus groups, the ADU, no matter what type it is, attached or detached, cannot exceed the height of the primary structure. And just looking at the community right behind us, we have two-and-a-half-story almost three-story homes, and we have ranchers. If you're on a rancher lot, your ADU can't be taller than that rancher. It's not greater than the height allowed under the zone, it's greater than the actual height of the primary dwelling on the lot. Integral attached may not be more than 49%. You may say, hey, 49% could potentially be a lot. Yes, it could, but it also can facilitate the rancher aspect that we were talking about. We do have single-story homes throughout the city that have walkout basements. So a conversion of that basement would basically take you to 49%. We wanted to make sure that ADUs serve as ADUs, so we want to make sure they have a separate entrance from the primary building. If the goal is you're bringing in another household, quote-unquote, into one of these, they shouldn't have to walk through the primary dwelling to get to their dwelling. These are going to be, again, not to be used as a short-term rental. That was clear. We want to process these as a minor amendment application, including notification requirements. So while other jurisdictions, and even the state guidance packet that I said, hey, these should be allowed by right, we were sensitive to what we heard from the focus groups. It should go through a public process. Now, while it's a staff approval, the notification requirements, every adjoining and confronting property will be notified that one of these will come there. We will wait seven days to process. If there's comments, we can bump this up to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission can then review the accessory dwelling unit. So we're not rubber-stamping these. We felt it important that communities, again, whether they're common ownership or not, have a say in what comes in, or at least have the opportunity to comment. If they're in historic areas, they have to go through the HOP process, historic area work permits. And I think most importantly, from our standpoint, to maintain the integrity of the accessory of accessory dwelling units, you can't subdivide out a detached ADU and then sell it off as a private lot. It has to be clearly accessory to the primary dwelling. So that's a little legalese. Now, I know what you're really waiting for, with a lot of the discussion last work session. I'm going to turn it over to Greg for a discussion about the CBD zone.
Are we doing questions as we go, or save them all?
We'll save them. We're almost done anyway, roughly.
Next slide. Sorry, I cannot reach the keyboard. So CBD zone. So quickly, I wanted to go through what's the existing CBD zone and what we have on the books now, and obviously, what's being proposed by staff, eye-level-wise. So currently processed, Planning Commission reviews all site plans in the CBD zone. The only place the council has a role right now is if there's a waiver request of the height or the setbacks. We are proposing to allow the Planning Commission to review those waiver requests, again, just to align the process, since the Planning Commission's seen this from start to finish through the process anyway. To us, it just made sense that the Planning Commission also review the waiver request. Setbacks, right now, there are no setback requirements in the zone unless you're a budding neighbor has a window facing your property, in which case it's a 15-foot setback. It's always been odd. I never really understood why it was 15-foot setback. Building code typically allows you to build closer than that. It just changes your construction method typically on how you fireproof the building. So again, we're just making a recommendation, again, to let the setbacks be established either through the master plan process, or through the Planning Commission's review of the site plan. And that aligns similar to how MXD zone or CD zone sometimes operates as well. So height, I think this was the part that had the most discussion two weeks ago. So currently, the code allows four stories unless a waiver's granted, and then with that waiver, up to nine stories. Our recommendation is, again, to change that up to six stories or 72 feet unless a waiver's granted for residential, and for non-residential, 90 feet unless a waiver's granted. In both situations, the waivers also go up to about nine stories. So again, residential, nine stories and 108 feet, non-residential, 135 feet. Just want to make it clear, because this came up last time we met, the review of this is still discretionary through the site plan process, so it's not a by-right height. The Planning Commission still has the authority to review both the master plan, city policies, and best interest as it relates to this review of the site plan, to determine what is the appropriate height. So again, it may, someone may come from four stories or five stories, Planning Commission can say, nope, doesn't make sense there because of the context of the site, should be three stories. You can go to the next slide. So again, just a little bit on the master plan. The Old Town Master Plan was adopted in 2005, so it's been a number of years since we've last reviewed that. But it is the guidance right now for the long-term development of Old Town. It does talk about new commercial and residential development, and one of the key aspects of that, it does talk about significant density within the Old Town district. And it does allow currently up to sites about five stories, but it does allow one building up to nine stories. And just a real thing on the master plan, real quick, master plan compliance does not require road compliance with every piece of that element of the master plan. It does allow the approval body to decide what compliance means. So again, we have a number of instances in the city and the Old Town district now where the master plan recommendation may be three stories, and it's a four-story building that's been approved and constructed. And then I also want to quickly go over, so I did some research. There hasn't been a lot of development, unfortunately, in Old Town over the years, but there has been at least four that I wanted to bring to your attention where waivers were granted since 1999. Those are the Old Town Cedar Courts, which was approved of the five stories. Gaithersburg Station, again, five stories in 2008. Crossings at Old Town, five stories in 2013. And then most recent, the Fishman Project was approved in 2018 for six stories. So just to wrap up the CBD zone, staff does want, proposing to maintain as currently proposed. It's our opinion, it does meet the intent of the master plan, and will further the goals of increasing physical density in the district. But we do want to make sure it's clear and clarified in the revisions that we'll come back to at the joint work session, that the Planning Commission will be the one who ultimately decides the height. So just to clarify, it's not a by-right, but a discretionary decision as it relates to that. And then we recommend at least maintaining the six stories for a waiver, again, without, sorry, up to six stories with a waiver, and the ability on the waiver to be granted by the Planning Commission on a case-by-case basis. You can go to the next slide. So lighting, I'll cover this real quick as well. So site lighting, we did take the comment we received about concerns about LEDs. We did talk to the Department of Public Works. They recommend- They recommend and support LED lighting for streets and parking lots, but they did have some concerns about making that a requirement throughout for all lighting in the city. They do think that there may be needs or requirements that can't be met under LED lighting. So they do recommend that we still keep it as written, but maybe clarify that energy-efficient lighting should be used at all times as much as possible. And then lastly, on lighting, building lighting. So in 2018, staff worked with the planning commission on a policy to help distinguish the difference between signage and building lighting. You may have seen before, like the Toyota dealerships, they have the giant portal window, portals on the entrance. It's all lit up. It's a little sign in the corner. Under the old code priority 2018, that whole portal was considered the signage. We working with, again, staff working with the planning commission, wanted to make it clear that that's not really all the signage, right? There can be an architectural element to sign, to lighting, that maybe has a little sign in it, but shouldn't be counted towards the signage requirements. Based off that direction we received from the commission in 2018, when we revised the code in 2020 for the sign ordinance, we actually codified that policy. And so, and our recommendations with this is we're just carrying that forward. We're not changing from the deviation 2020 where that policy was established in 2018. Next slide. And with that, I will turn it back over to Joe to wrap up the presentation.
So as Rob mentioned, you know, we are hoping to bring a fully revised code up to the joint public hearing. And as of now, the next two slides will show kind of some of what we believe that those edits may be. So starting with kind of more technical and mundane edits, really giving it another once-over for, you know, general clerical revisions, consistency of language, formatting of tables, spelling, and the like. Additionally, section 24-1.5, so these are provisions that are in the beginning of the zoning code that allow to prevent the new code from penalizing any prior approvals or prior permits that are issued. Minor change to correct what was the original intent of the statement.
This is the section that Councilmember McNulty brought up. This is how to use the zoning ordinance. So, you know, and if, within the packet, you'll note, we receive public comment attesting to the same things upon discussion. Joe's right. Section one is a lot of the big stuff, but we're not throwing out the big stuff. It was really this chart, and we think that it still has value, but it belongs on the website more so than in the ordinance.
I apologize. I'm a slide ahead.
And just emphasize that they don't allow staff the ability to amend that without going through a text amendment process, as we learn how people utilize the code as well. So it's a little simpler for our end.
Additionally, we've realized through conversations again with others in our own internal review, a few kind of definitions that were not included in the draft provided to you, things such as basements, certain types of uses such as contractor services or warehousing, that will be included. A technical correction, but when calculating floor area ratio, we propose that it would go to the hundredths, not the tenths, as it's set in the quote in front of you, really as a matter of practically, just, you know, how one may be able to use such bonuses and not have them automatically kind of round down to the next point. And then also provide more clarity around the definitions for single-family and multifamily homes, which housing types fall into which of those categories, which is an area that we think that we can improve the usability of the code. And then lastly, on the kind of zoning specific requirements themselves, as I erroneously started to say in the beginning, changes made to the provisions that would prevent the new code from having any negative impact on existing property owners or folks who have already received permit. Changes to the use categorization for meetings and banquet halls, removing them from their permissions in the I-3 zone. Adding additional language clarifying that accessory dwelling units cannot remove the required parking, as Rob just said. This was something that was our intent in drafting, but we feel could be made clearer since it is of such importance to, you know, to the community and to you all. Regarding the lighting section, especially in regard to our conversation from the prior joint work session, we intend to propose revisions that would require all new lighting to be energy efficient, as well as make amendments to make clear that lighting levels should be averaged across things like walkways. Additionally, and not on this slide, we were just talking before the, before this meeting here today, about additional revisions we can make to better ensure that interior lighting does not have that negative detrimental effect to the exterior by working within the construct that, you know, is in the proposed code. We feel that there are very minor revisions that could be made to also ensure that it's not just outdoor lighting that's, you know, spilling out onto sidewalks for neighboring properties, but also indoor lighting. Additionally, we propose to make changes to the accessory structure provisions for commercial uses, which again was a bit of an oversight in that they were proposed to work the same way for residential and commercial. In this instance, they should be more flexible to provide accessory structures, you know, in more locations on the site, as is common with commercial buildings. As well as the removal of animal accessory structure provisions and allowing for the planning commission to approve non-enclosed outdoor storage space. The draft that was previously provided to you had restrictions regarding non-enclosed outdoor storage, and this would provide an ability for an applicant to seek the approval of the commission in the event that they wanted to construct that. And with that, following this conversation, we are going to, as I said, work towards revisions to the code that will be distributed prior to the joint public hearing, which is currently scheduled for April 15.
We'll be happy to answer any questions.
I thought the same thing. Thank you all very much, Rob, Joe, Greg. Wanted to compliment you in particular on the charts and the parking comparisons were very helpful and illustrative. ADUs, I, the breakdown of the idea that the regulations and the ordinance are the limiting factor, I think is very helpful. And, and everything else. Given that Rob had asked about a question before, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to him. Go ahead, Rob.
Thanks, Mary.
And then we'll go to Neil.
So just the questions I jotted down as the presentation came on, so they may be discombobulated because we were pulled away to the end. So the parking comparisons to the other jurisdictions, it seemed like we were proposing a, pretty much across the board, parking ratios that are, are, would have less parking than our neighboring jurisdictions. Is that, do we have any concern with that? And what do the macro trends show, like outside of, you know, maybe our little parcel of land here in the DMV?
I think what I'd like to speak to is your first part, and then I'll turn it over to Joe for the trends. I think for the first part, what we've seen overall and what we heard through focus groups is much of our commercial areas right now are incredibly overparked. So when you look at some of the spreadsheets, like for example, Holbrook Center, which has like 92 spaces for the thing, that parking ratio breaks out to like one per 155, when the requirement is one for 225 or 250. So what we're seeing is a lot of overparking, and we've had as a goal from environmental standpoints, everything else, let's reduce it, let's back off. You know, the council, with the floating zones in particular, because that's what come before them, and we've retained this in retool, is that in floating zones, the applicant can propose an appropriate ratio. So for example, like Crown, at that point was four per thousand, and it allowed a variety of uses. So we're trying to get away from the overparked in the old model of you establish your parking based upon Christmas Eve, you know, busiest parking day of the year. There was a lot of discussion with this when Saul came in with their concept plan for Kepel's Commercial District, and same thing with Kimco. And they both reduced their parking, and they're really not suffering. So, you know, from our standpoint, we wanted to see, working with Joe, what was going on locally, but we also kept in mind really what we've seen locally over the last 10 years and what the desire's been from commercial property owners, applicants, and even the public and council and planning commission. So from a national perspective, I'll throw it to Joe.
So I think if we break it down by use category at a residential level, what you're looking at is roughly the same as what you'll find in most kind of metro areas, you know, outside of city centers. You know, it's not, it's really at that point based more on the practical need of residents who are living in these, you know, predominantly lower-density homes. For, in the realm of kind of retail commercial, I actually think that the rates that are in here, again, are pretty good for kind of a metro area. You know, they're not as excessive as some more rural areas where you might see one per 100 square feet for a grocery store, or something that really just kind of has a tremendous hindrance on, on development potential, but is, is more practical. But I think that the employment is where, like I mentioned before, we, there was the biggest decrease. And I think that this is important, not necessarily from the perspective of, you know, we're lowering parking for office buildings, but rather because it is trying to, in a way, future-proof some of these uses, right? The way that industrial use of 10 or 20 or 30 years ago was staffed or operated isn't the same as it is today, but the parking rate was. So in trying to modernize that just to maybe to today's rate, would actually probably, you know, further hinder the ability for some of those uses to change into the future. It allows for a developer to be able to put forward a product that's viable for them and their use, rather than have it be based on something that, you know, in 20 years from now, we may have established here today. But I think that the specifics of the employment generating uses, yeah, the rates that we're putting forward here today are, are more aggressive in their intent to be flexible for, you know, job generating uses.
And plus, I'd like to, you know, pile on with this. Keep in mind with retool, they can increase the minimum parking requirements by 10%. So we're not saying, you know, whatever's on this chart is all you get. They can go to 10% by right, and if they want to go before 10%, they can make their case before the planning commission. Or it would be incorporated in the ratios they present to council at a schematic development plan stage. You know, they could say, hey, the minimum would say this, but these are the reasons we feel we need this ratio. So we're just trying to help out where we can by reducing impervious cover, increasing tree canopy, you know, not making people build empty spaces that aren't going to be used. But if somebody needs those additional spaces, the avenues are still there from a regulatory standpoint.
Okay. Yeah, that helps. And then, so since we're, we're moving away from a use perspective to a more agnostic perspective, my reading of this is that it preserves the, around the fringes, so the minimums and the maximums. Is there the ability for the planning commission to, because of the unique characteristics of whatever's coming for them, to adjust the floor ratio or the cap, whatever, if that would ever be the case? So it's outside of kind of the, a road tool and more of a tailored tool for what is actually being presented for them? Is that part of the proposed code?
So, yeah, it is. So currently, the code does already allow waivers, so the planning commission has the authority to grant reductions and maximums above. We are retaining that and actually just strengthening it in many ways, but actually adding findings to those waivers today. So someone, say your maximum parking is 100 spaces, you're building 200, you know, so you're increasing it by 100 spaces. Planning commission can review that request and based off a study provided, can then make a decision, say, yeah, that makes sense in this scenario, 200 spaces, we would grant that waiver.
What if the formula comes out to be 100 spaces, and the planning commission takes a look and says, hmm, this really needs 140 spaces? Can they do that under the proposed code?
Is that a Frank question? Should we get Frank up to the podium?
I think, I mean, obviously, this is why we're having this work session tonight. I understand the issue. We really hadn't thought of it from that perspective, because rarely has planning commission ever said you need more impervious surface and parking, but, but it could occur. So I think there can be the provision, and even with council, you know, again, floating zones, STPs, an applicant comes in, proposes the parking ratio, the council could look at this and go, we think this ratio is way too low for whatever reason. So I think we have the ability, or, you know, we can work with Frank on the specific language, but I understand the issue, and I think we can make this change and incorporate it in.
Okay. I appreciate that, because I appreciate the erudite judgment of the planning commission and want to give them the tools necessary to do that job. Anyway.
But I think to reassure you on that qualification.
Reassure with you sitting next to it.
We'd have to make findings in a way that also pointed to some kind of study or some kind of evidence or some kind of data or something. We couldn't just arbitrarily say, eh, make it 40 more.
Right. That's why I was going to bring Frank up to.
And I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that there is the tool to do that upon appropriate findings. Second was the, this is similar vein, is the minor amendment process for ADUs. Assume all of the other floors are met, so all the other requirements for ADUs are met. Is that process for minor amendment meant to then give the planning commission the ability to say, okay, you meet all the requirements, but?
No, my amendments, once again, are handled at the staff level. The intent is, even if you meet everything, it's because of the openness and transparency that we heard from the focus group's neighbors, potentially because of the concerns about visual impacts, whatever else, have the ability, as opposed to a by-right, where they would just come in with a building permit, so we get this. If we find there is a lot of dissension, concern, whatever, as with any minor amendment, we're allowed to not process it as that and move it up to the planning commission for a full review.
Yeah. And so if, so if it goes to the planning commission, and the planning commission, then all of the criteria for the ADU approvals are met, can the planning commission still say, no, it doesn't meet the context for where it is?
Yes, because it's the findings that the other findings for a full application that comes before planning commission. So we have things where things meet, you know, the dimensional restrictions, but it's those other findings, life, safety, welfare, it's these other considerations that the planning commission takes into account. So potentially, there is the ability. There's also the ability that even in the face of, you know, neighborhood scorn, they still approve it, but then there's still the appeal process. So we wanted to make sure there was a process for public input, public engagement, and transparency throughout.
Okay. Final question, and I don't want.
Hold on just one second.
Can you clarify a point? You said if there's a lot of feedback, if there's only one feedback, does it then go to the planning commission? What is that threshold?
Yeah, the way the code's currently drafted, because as of right now, as of a minor amendment, it requires staff to review it. There's no discretion on allowing it to bump up to the planning commission. We've added language to the code that allows staff to bump a minor amendment to the planning commission based off the planning director's discretion. So again, it really, it's a case-by-case, right? You know, if we get one comment and we go, this is a great comment, we really feel uncomfortable at a staff level approving this minor amendment, we have that ability then to bump it up. It could also be 100 people, right? It could be 100 people, and staff looks at it and says, another day, it meets all, everything on the requirements for an ADU, there's no concern in it from a staff perspective, and we go ahead and approve that. But again, the, our appeal process is still in there, right? You can still appeal a staff decision as well, just like you can appeal a planning commission approval. If you pull a staff's decision, it goes to the planning commission.
Do neighbors have, do neighbors have the ability to appeal a staff decision, or is it only?
Yes. Anyone can appeal anything they feel agreed to.
Standing, that was the word I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks. That was a great question. So finally, don't want to overwork the planning commission, but on the, the building heights, just to be clear, is it by right up to six stories, and then the waiver grants the planning commission the discretion to look at the height above six stories, or is it the planning commission has the ability to?
You're talking about the CBD zone?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So we want to clarify that. It's not as clear as I think we intended to be in the current draft. We prefer to be discretionary approval by the planning commission, so they have the authority to approve up to six stories by right, let's call it, but it's even not really by right, right? They allow up to six stories without any waivers being granted.
Okay.
So, but the planning commission, under that, under the way that we want to kind of rearrange the code, right, or redraft it a bit, it does give the ability of the planning commission to say, six stories doesn't make sense here, we don't feel uncomfortable with that because of the context, let's save the surrounding area, and make it up to five.
What about five stories? Because, because we're changing, we're proposing to change the height limits in the code from, from four stories to six stories in that by-right category. So say they come in under the new code with five stories, so it's below the six-story threshold, but it's above where it used to be.
Same thing, still discretionary.
Okay.
It can be three stories, and it's discretionary, yes.
Okay, so not by right, planning commission would still have.
Yeah. And that's, again, it was an oversight a bit on the draft, because the draft for setbacks clearly says that as well, that it's established by the planning commission. So we just want to basically add the same language to the heights, that the setback, the height is established by the planning commission.
So if it's all discretionary, why do we need a waiver process?
It's a higher level of judicial review and findings, so.
Keep it on a road?
Yeah.
And a wig, you should see it.
We have to bid night.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Neil.
I have a couple of quicker questions. First of all, on the shopping center analysis, what do you conceive will happen with these? What do you expect small shopping centers to do with 40% of their former parking lots? What do you think is gonna, is the likely outcome here? Are they gonna build a bunch more buildings and stores or parks? Or what do you think that will happen here?
Just before, because I can tell Greg wants to jump in too, I want to make clear with retool, as we say in, you know, Article 1, we don't require any changes. They don't, they can remain as they are.
I'm asking for speculation.
Speculation is, yes, I think they may take the opportunity to expand because they don't have as much, you know, parking to do. Or they may actually take some out to reduce their stormwater management fee tax bill.
Greg, did you?
I'd agree with him.
Okay.
That's not a requirement, is it? BRT parking reduction, there's one slight hitch that I see is that it's, the reduction is available to sites within the distance of an existing BRT station. What if one is being built and it'll be delivered in a year, but you know it's gonna happen? Would you, would you make that possible? The reduction possible, or you really want to see it?
No, I understand the issue and I think obviously the council and commission know where we were coming from. We have transit lines and transit stations that have been long planned that are never coming to fruition, so we didn't want to reap the benefits. But I think if it's under construction, much like a vesting of a site plan, once construction begins, we would consider that constructed. I don't think necessarily, I wouldn't feel as confident just with it being shown in the construction CIP.
Yeah, I agree with you.
But I think as soon as that work begins, because historically, they don't begin and then stop. So I think we could do it as zoning interpretation, not necessarily codify it, but do the zoning interpretation that the commencement of construction would equal a constructed facility.
Okay, all right. I have some questions about ADUs, but I need to rethink a little bit. I'm just trying to picture how you would put an ADU on my townhome. I don't think it's physically possible. Are they only for single-family homes?
Well, those are single-family and throughout the city. And this goes back to, I was mentioning when Councilmember Wu brought it up last. We do have some townhomes that have detached garages. So, you know, there is the ability for conversion. We do with the new change in parking ratios, how we calculate it where a garage no longer counts as a half space. But if you have a townhome with a garage and you have, you know, potentially in some areas, we have exceptionally long driveways, so they got a four-car driveway, they could convert their townhome garage because they would still meet the required parking, both for the ADU and the primary structure. We do have some townhomes throughout the city that actually have walkout basements. So again, that is open, it's some of the neighborhoods on the west side. So this is why we were saying it was really difficult for us to begin cherry picking who gets to do it and who not. If you can meet the standards, you can do the ADU.
All right, you know the inventory better than I do. I just couldn't picture it on my house because I have no driveway. And I'm just trying to picture adding a third parking spot.
Rejected. It's rejected.
All right, I've got the works advantage anyway, so I guess I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got this question that's been circulating in my head. I'm gonna try to formulate it. In regards to parking in these other jurisdictions, did parking charges, metered parking, play an effect at this at all in terms of the comparison? And I'm thinking of like downtown Rockville. There's lots of metered parkers, it's hard to park down there for free. And their volume of parking, because they can charge for it versus what we're seeing? I don't know if that came into.
No, no, this, so this analysis only looked at off-street parking, so on private, on private properties, you know, provided with a development, not on-street parking or paid public parking lots.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wonder if it would play a factor? And off-street, off-street parking, that's metered?
Yeah, I can say that, you know, from a larger global perspective, it usually does play a factor in things like determining, say, parking overlays where no parking is provided in the central business district because there are public lots or ample on-street parking. So it's definitely a tool that is available, but it is not one that we're editing for the purposes of this initiative.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the clarifications. And Greg, I appreciate your saying that the way that it's currently written for the central business district is not the way it's intended, because the way that it does read says that it's by right up to six stories. So I think it's important to clarify, you know, whether it's four, is like, is there anything by right? Or is it all at the discretion, number one? Number two, I'm gonna disagree with you respectfully that I don't think going up to six by right is in line with the existing master plan. If you read through all the different sectors, it was intended to be three to four stories with possibility of individual places here and there. The nine-story potential building was where 16 South Summit is, which is not going to be nine stories at this point. So I do think that if that is something we're considering, I really would prefer that there be a more intense discussion of that from a public standpoint and decide if that makes sense in that space. I'm also not comfortable, and we kind of talked about this two weeks ago, removing council's involvement in the central business district. You know, in the floating zones, we have say, and this would be removing that from a very important part of the city. Councilmember Wu had an interesting idea when we spoke last about kind of having that, is it a minor effect? Like we do with the change of an approved SDP or something like that. Whether that is written in such a way that if it's reflective of a change to an existing piece, so if we're going from a two-story building to something that's one, like going from a two to three would be fine. But if it's, you know, two or more from what's existing, maybe that needs to be reviewed by council to determine whether it's a minor effect, and then we can take a look at it. That way, we're not holding up the process. We certainly want redevelopment, but I think it would be incumbent upon us just from an oversight standpoint to be able to still have, you know, the ability to look at pieces that are coming in. I don't think there was a question in there necessarily, more just a comment. I did want to touch on something that Councilmember Harris brought up about the BRT parking waivers. There's a ton of exceptions in there, most of which are for floating zones. So if I look at the zoning, there's really only one spot along 355 where BRT is gonna be, and it's the commercial district north of Montgomery Village Avenue, where this exception, where this parking exception could really take place. Am I misreading that?
Not as written right now. So if we take the longer view, you know, the goal has always been, you know, under the next master plan, whatever, to sort of clean up the Frederick Avenue and get rid of this hodgepodge. The reason we didn't include the floating zones, as we wrote, they get to establish their parking ratios. So, you know, we don't want to have them come into council and hypothetically go one per 100, and then because they're here, they get to drop it lower. Just start with the lower number to begin with for review. So this is really only related to the Euclidean, and because of the quarter-mile distance, even when you look at some of the parcels, it can bleed out. We didn't want to open it up to residential, because residential should not be reducing its required off-street parking for housing. So it was really with the commercial standpoint where this potentially could come in. Again, we have not written the next land use element. We have not begun fully scoping. We have not begun doing any research. But we always wrote the zoning ordinance with the understanding that under the next master plan update, there could be a comprehensive rezoning, so a lot of stuff could change. So again, the reason floating zones were exempted, they get to proffer to council and planning commission their proposed ratios. They should be baking in proximity to transit, and it's only applicable to Euclidean zones. And because not knowing what's gonna happen, you know, if somebody wants to begin redeveloping and they're currently in C2 under the corridor, they can take advantage of this. Depending upon how everything shakes out, there's no existing stations. But again, we just don't know what the future holds. So we wanted to be able to accommodate both types of zoning.
Understood, okay, thank you. And then finally, I just want to comment a little bit about the trends and the statistics from the focus groups. Obviously, you know, only so many folks are gonna be responding to questionnaires about zoning. We understand it's difficult to get what you got, so thank you for the efforts that you've done. But I also want to make sure that we're understanding that the percentages and the facts that we're trying to extrapolate from this data is from a relatively small data set and is certainly not a scientific data set because it's people that are involved and active and it's not, you know, across the board. So we may find that people are, that were interested in ADUs are the ones that respond. People who aren't thinking about it may not have responded. So I just want us to be a little bit careful about projecting too much from a small data set that, oh, everybody wants ADUs now. I think what you've done in order to let the language kind of weed out some of the places, like Councilmember Harris says, I can't see how mine would work. It probably wouldn't. I don't think mine would either, just based on the amount of square footage that's available. I just want us to be careful about making too broad decisions based on, especially like things, you know, office space around COVID. You know, we're still shaking out, people are still starting to come back to the office. And what we're doing now, two to three days in the office for some places, we may be in a completely different world in three years. So I just want us to be cautious about making those changes.
Totally understood, and we had, to be honest with you, the same concerns. I think we were incredibly blessed in that, you know, what we lacked in quantity, we made up for in quality. So the focus groups of our residents were made up of HOA presidents and community activists. So they represent their communities. We were very lucky in our focus groups, both for the housing element and for this. We received a diverse cross-section. So we had older neighborhoods, we had newer neighborhoods, we had common ownership, we had no HOAs. We had single-family detached homes, we had condo owners. So we received a broad cross-section. Yes, we have loved a lot more input, of course. But this is why we also drew back and why part of the reason we wanted to do housing before retool so we could get some stuff in to help formulate how we did retool. So between the two efforts, we feel we, and with the surveys, which did have better participation than necessarily the focus groups, we feel, yes, is it statistically, you know, validatable? Or, I'm stumbling the word there, probably not. But I think, can we draw inferences and correlations that will hold true going forward? Especially the way we approach codifying these issues.
Thank you.
Jamil?
Three quick things on life sciences. So our lease is up for my day job this year, so we've been looking, surveying Gaithersburg. And sort of the lease kind of survey that we've gotten back on the allotments per square footage are like double and triple this. Now, I get it, that's not the entire, like, the entire building creates the amount. But you see, there's a section on package page 433 where it says, this might be light for life sciences. I would just echo, at least on my small data point of 12 or so different properties that we've looked at, this is a little light based on that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Hernandez. Could you please give me the packet page?
433.
There we go. Just so we're looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the parking, so the 1.5 per thousand. Again, we had a focus group. I understand where you're coming from. As I mentioned, this is essentially the minimum. If you needed more, we've created the avenues to get more.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I've not seen anything close to that in the market research.
What I'll add into that as well is, we've had a number of life science projects over the last four years come through the planning commission for review. All of them have requested waivers to our standards.
Right.
This is the number that essentially most times came out. There's some deviations in that, right? But this is roughly the same number that the planning commission has granted as waivers in the past.
And that industrial zone is for production facilities, not for commercial office facilities? So if you have a life science, commercial office facility, that would be under the office.
Or mixed.
Or mixed.
Yeah, so where we have, it's, some of them are mixed where they have lab and office.
So one per 350, one per 300, depending on what your use is.
So your needs need more parking, is that what you're?
Yes, or at least what I'm seeing in the leases is more parking, you know, for life science spaces.
But those leases would have been based on whatever the property was owned at, whenever it was built.
For sure, yeah.
Years ago, so they're gonna reflect the old.
Yes.
I think the real question is, do you find yourself out of parking spaces? Or do you find yourself within excess of parking spaces? That'll tell you, that'll tell you whether the lease numbers are right or not.
So that, yeah?
Nope.
Oh, the second one's on ADUs. So I am looking to do an ADU. And one thing that just struck me on the setbacks and, we have a detached garage. You can't make 10, like, we're at the lot line. The garage is on the lot line, the Kentlands. So how do you, how does that work? For, because they're, like, in our block, there's a house with an ADU, they're on the, you know, detached, it's kind of similar style. I don't know that we could ever make that setback. Is that a waiver process or?
So that is the challenge, and this is why we had to be very black and white with this. We wanted the 10 feet for the detached because by and large, you know, not knowing your specific lot, you know, maybe it'd be great and maybe your neighbors love you and they would be fine with it. But we have to look at it from a greater perspective. But if, again, this is if your ADU was attached to the primary structure, then it's just the standard, you know, what is it, five or 10 foot, or five-foot setback that you would have right now. We have to do that. I get nervous about opening up too many waiver provisions. The reason for 10, as you saw in this, you know, there was a lot of feedback that is the concern with people that it's too close, so.
But how about, like, in the Kentlands, for example, where there's dozens of these that are at the lot line? And so if any new person wants to do it, they wouldn't be able, as I read this, they wouldn't be able to do.
The grandfather.
No, no, new people.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The old ones are grandfather.
Right, no, but if, I mean, but if you're trying to encourage more ADUs to be built, you've foreclosed in a development that's kind of zoned for that or currently set up, you know, for that. Like, in our HOA, we have ADU specifications for people and sort of encouraging it. But this seems to foreclose that opportunity for a lot of these, you know, our setbacks are much smaller in the Kentland. And this may not work in other neighborhoods, I get that.
I understand, and again, I think this is something we can ponder on and maybe explore here. Our concern was, yes, you know, we were gonna slam the door.
Yeah.
And just because it can work in Kentlands, again, we look at zoning ordinance from zoning perspective. We don't look at it as individual neighborhoods. So by and large, you know, this is what we want to do. Yes, we're aware that what was formerly referred to as urban cottages exist in the Kentlands. We also know that sometimes there's problems with them too. So, you know, this was our safeguard. If, you know, catch me right now and Greg has a thought, I just don't know immediately right now how we could rectify your specific issue.
One of the solutions potentially could be, right, you know, we have this by right, let's call it, dimensional restrictions, right? We meet those, minor amendment process. Outside of that, maybe it's something the planning commission can review on a case-by-case basis to determine, does that proposed setback make sense in that neighborhood, in that context?
Or submit prior to the change.
Well, again, right now, so urban cottages do have to go as a full AFP to planning commission. So, you know, that is a potential vehicle to bake in. We take out the staff approval aspect and somebody's gonna have to go to the planning commission if they want to do something for the less than 10 feet for detached. We can do that, but that's no guarantee that, you know, it's going to be approved. But it is a higher level of review.
Is that, is there a separation, is there a differentiation to be made between, in this example, it's an MXD, new urbanism and all the things, all the contexts that would be considered and has set the precedent for doing it versus an R90 where the setbacks are part of the, you know, I mean, there's zoning and there's zoning, right? So if you had, if you're in a zone that already has that kind of flexibility, it seems to me we should have that opportunity to continue. You don't slam the door on where the context is already proven to be appropriate, but on the ones where you're still trying to control some of those conventional.
Councilmember Wu was chopping at the bit, but I want to just respond really fast. Not only MXD is created equal, and again, given my druthers, the lots typically in Euclidean zones are larger and could actually probably support better, shorter, smaller setbacks than some of the MXD zone properties. So as I said, right now, even though, you know, they were at the SDP level acknowledged, they still go through a full planning commission review. So again, we view that as, you know, if this is a direction consensus-wise the council and the planning commission would wish to go, you know, we can bake that in for detached, that request less than 10-foot setback, that it get processed through the planning commission. And again, we can take out the staff approval aspect altogether.
And maybe, before we, this is my final question, because maybe it ties into what you're gonna ask, which is, to the extent different council members have, or we have, changes, proposed amendments, or what's the, your recommendation for conveying those to?
Anything else for us consensus is, if there's three members, we're happy to move forward and it gets difficult for staff to discern individual wish lists.
Sure.
So.
Sorry, my comment was on Councilmember Hernandez's situation and other situations is that a lot of the ADUs that are being built in the Kentlands and Lakelands are built on top of their garages. So the garages are necessarily at the lot line. So couldn't you just make it so that, and so you'd have less of a concern because the garage is a budding, a muse or a street or an alley or something like that? It's not a budding somebody else's property. So couldn't you just make the setback 10 feet from an adjoining property? So that way, the muse or the.
I understand the discussion, the concern is you're adding height.
Well, so, well, let me just suggest that I think you get the point here that where ADUs are currently allowed, it seems that the council wants to continue to allow ADUs in that, within that context. So we'll leave it to you guys to draft something that fits there, whether, and we don't have to write that.
And do we have content? And do we have consensus?
Well, I just want to make a comment that we should be careful about in this particular example, waiving a setback within a certain neighborhood, right? You want to be careful about how that, how that comes out. I'd like that, you know, neighborhood aside, it's an ordinance, it's zoning, some will be able to, some won't. If we, we have to be careful with waivers. The, waiving the setback because some homes in the neighborhood are right at the, at the line.
When the Kentlands, all of them are, that's the challenge on these.
Right, but, but then, then you've just set an ordinance for neighborhood. You've just done exactly what you were trying to avoid. So I would just, commentarily, we should be careful.
Maybe rephrase, is there consensus? I think Chair Bauer said it much more elegantly. Is there, is there consensus to, you know, to the extent the new urbanism design and what was the intent of the Kentlands? We don't want to foreclose that with new zoning requirements, right? We wanted to build more of those ADUs. These new zoning rules preclude it.
And I think to what Councilmember Henderson is saying is that if we made it consistent with MXD, for example, and all MXD could go to the lot line or whatever versus a Euclidean, then, then that would make sense. You got to set it yourself. There's zoning and then there's zoning. So how do you set it up so that whatever that is applies elsewhere? And then make sure that whether it's in the R90 or R6 or wherever.
I think what staff is hearing is that there is consensus that you want us to explore before the public hearing to address this specific issue. And I think we understand, and I think, you know, just the quick over the shoulder with Joe, Greg and I, I think there's multiple ways to approach this. So I think what we will do is, you know, obviously before the public hearing, obviously have something to present to you, you know, the way we feel best. It could be, you know, again, handling it as their handle now, as an AFP before planning commission. It could be as simple as, you know, you have to meet, you know, taking out the 10 feet and you have to meet the setbacks as defined under the zone or as established under a schematic development plan. You know, that's another opportunity too. We don't want to commit to necessarily anything right now because we haven't really looked at what are the potential impacts. But we hear clearly, you know, the mayor and Councilmember Hernandez, so we got this one.
We, yeah, and we, and to Lisa's point, we want to make sure that it's equitably applied.
Yes.
One other thing I want to see if there's consensus on, and I, or Rob, Rob I know wants to bring up something that Jim had.
Yeah, so I just wanted to echo Jim's concern about having a process akin to, and this is just conceptually is something that we've been talking about, akin to the minor impacts process that with respect to development within the CBD, something like that.
Come on, Rob. You could have done better than that.
You have Chair Bauer who could turn into wonderful prose.
I'm still flustered by this microphone being so close to my face.
So again, if what we're discussing is as written right now, that height comes before council. Cool, that's one issue. Greg has brought up that, you know, you wouldn't need a waiver unless it goes to a certain thing, but everything's discretionary. What I heard from Councilmember McNulty was if you're doing a teardown redevelopment of a structure or even an existing structure, you add one or more stories, you know, that would fall under coming before council. Is that correct? I think I'm trying to weed out, again, part of staff's concern is, council's always had a role, you know, with the waivers, as Greg mentioned, you know, for simplicity's sake, you know, part of it is ease of use, reducing process, everything else, saving money for applicants. That was the proffer of letting the planning commission handle it. What was brought up is, you know, we're trying to identify if the council wants to retain a role, what exactly is that scope? I don't think you want to take over CBD because I don't think you want every one of your agendas filled, you know, reviewing decks and architecture and paint changes and new windows like planning commission does. So it's just still trying to figure out specifically.
God bless the planning.
Yeah, I mean, I think we found the appropriate balance, I think, in, in the process for, for minor impacts. And you can sense when those come up in the MXD zone, and I'll note from our last conversation in which I talked a lot more about this, you know, we talked about the characteristic of the CBD zone being a mixed, a floating zone that really operates like a Euclidean zone. And so I think that is the, is the tension that we're trying to address here. And so when you're talking about minor impacts, for example, you know, sometimes you'll come before us on like a use change inside of a building in MXD zone and you'll get the sense immediately that that is very minor. But, and it shouldn't come before us, it should go to the planning commission. But thank you for bringing it to us for that consideration. And then in some cases, you know, we have looked at things that really do have a fundamental change to what has been approved. And in those cases, I think on two occasions, we said, no, we want to review that. And so that's why I thought that would be the appropriate process here. So because that mechanism doesn't exist in the CBD zone, but it is a floating zone, so you do have the possibility for changes in use, changes in, in, fundamental changes in the use of any given aspect of the zone. Those are the kinds of things that I think I would like to see a mechanism built in that at least provides the council the ability to say, yes, we need to take a more discerning look at that, or no, that that is minor, that should go to the planning commission, akin to the process in the MXD zone. Although, you know, if there's another way of doing it, that's just.
So again, and before I turn it over to Greg, so two things. First of all, you know, it helps us to define what is the scope. And second, I'd like to remember the council and planning commission, we did a work session and retool has changed that. So a lot of the stuff that used to come before you no longer comes before you. It goes right to planning commission. So again, the question is, you know, that we have is for the council, do you really want to review every single change of use that comes into the CBD zone?
No. Part of the goal of the whole project, this endeavor, right, looking retool, right, was to try to reduce some of the processes to help incentivize development, not disincentivize development. Adding additional process from our experience usually disincentivizes development in areas.
Well, I mean, we can start at the most extreme. Parks and Brook should have came before the city council. That should not have originated at the planning.
Ultimately, I think that's what we're talking about here.
And so that's, so.
So how do you, how do you, how do you trigger a threshold? How does an application trigger a threshold like that, that we, that should come before us? Where I legitimately think that, you know, there was enough outcry from the public that it should be the body that's accountable, most accountable to the public, were elected by them, that gets some sort of, we have some process that comes before us besides just like, was it historic? Which is a totally different question.
Yeah, and so then walking back from that line, like, akin to some stuff that's come before us, I, I don't think the council needs to review whether or not a use of a building changes from a, an office use to a kinder care use. And that's one of the things.
Or decks, like changes in decks.
Or lime green painting on the cats' buildings.
Oh, no, those are going to you.
No, I understand, again, it's just, it's the challenge for staff. And we understand what the concern is. And again, it's just trying to figure out. I understand, Councilmember Wu, what you're saying, it's just hard for us to identify we're drawing the line. We understand Parks and Brook was very contentious from staff's opinion. The use met the master plan. So I don't know, what is the trigger when, you know, upon analysis, it meets the requirements as called for? So, you know.
Well, let me jump in. Let's not make anything discretionary in CBD. Let's start with that. Let's start with a, not by right, but certainly a limit. And everything after that does get a lot of eyes on it. Call it three stories. I mean, whatever, whatever makes everyone comfortable.
A certain amount of square feet.
Or if I may, or it, what's the delta from what existed? Is it more, is it two or more stories? Is it, you know, a change of, of square footage over X? And you, I think it might even, the mayor mentioned the historic district. You know, we recently changed that process where we decide whether we want to entertain it. You know, we decide if it's worthy. Same kind of thing here, you know, using that language of, does it have a minimal effect? You know, we don't need to entertain the entire thing if we, we do the courtesy review and we decide, yes, planning commission can take final action on this. I think that's kind of where we're landing. It at least provides a layer of oversight that we can say, yeah, we don't, we don't need to handle that one. But figuring out, is it either delta on height, usage or, or square footage, et cetera? That might be something that can provide some consistency.
Neil.
So I'm going to go back to a question I asked at the prior hearing, which is the, going back to the visioning exercise from a few years ago, what was the vision for the CBD district that was outlined there? Or where, where did we agree, come to an agreement that height was, was?
It was a discussion in general with the visioning data analysis that again, most of the development potential that we have in the city going forward is going to be on the east side of town. Given what's there and the limitations of land available, in order to achieve certain goals, you're going to have to have heightened density. And I think Joe can speak to what he's seeing nationally to this, but that's where, there was nothing specifically that said CBD or this zone or that zone. It was in general, in order to meet our housing and employment goals by and large going forward, the development format, you're not going to see green fields of quarter acre lots anymore. You're gonna, you're gonna need height in order to achieve these. I understand, again, where Councilmember McNulty is going, the technical response is, okay, so if we have something that talks about deltas from redevelopment of properties that it comes before council for their review, and it's a thumbs up, thumbs down, the question is, if you guys want to retain it, what is that process? You know, are you then granting a waiver? Do you need us to write in a, now a public hearing process? So, you know, it's not as simple as, you know, up and down. You know, even the floating zones with the amendment in SDP ties into, at the end of the day, and what we've changed is now it's automatic that planning commission conducts the public hearing and that all amended SDPs come back to you now. So this, this is the technicality from a zoning regulatory perspective. I understand what the concern is. I understand what is being discussed that you would like to review. Again, if it is changes in heights above a certain level from existing, if it is increasing square footage by X percent over existing, we understand that. I have grave concerns about changes in use. Again, you know, that, that becomes a little too open-ended. And again, it's the second thing that if it has to come before you, instead of a thumbs up, thumbs down, it should just, you know, whether planning commission can handle it or not, if it's going to come before council, councilor should make the final decision as it comes before you. Because we get difficulty now trying to figure out what is the next process.
Is, go ahead, Jamil. Just a clarification. Is there, is there a mechanism for step in? So like, so where, maybe you set up the structure that you've proposed here, but council can at a point in that process step in with a vote, you know, with a three or more vote and say, okay, this project has reached its level of significance or complexity or public, you know, you know, interest where we could say, we want to make sure we're the final arbiters there. And then a council process kicks off.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, that, that would be from a regulatory overly complex and hard.
Yeah, I think, I think we would open ourselves up to liability for unfair processes from one developer to another. I don't think it should be arbitrary.
This is why, as a new council member, you get to ask these questions.
There you go. Would it be just, would it be as simple as just making it a joint public hearing?
Well, it's not a public hearing now. So again, that's, well, this is your decision. Joint public hearings are not easy. Again, that's adding costs, it's adding time, it's going against some of the fundamental principles of retool, and it's never been done in the CBD zone. So again, it can, as Greg mentioned, act as a disincentive to investment. So, you know, but, but again, that, we're trying to figure out, you know, if the real concern is massing, you know, that's something, you know, we might be able to deal with at the preliminary plan stage. Part of the thing is, as Councilmember Wu noted, even though it's a floating zone technically, it functions as Euclidean. So oftentimes, the first application we see is a combined preliminary and final. We can decouple that under the CBD zone. So we can have the preliminary plan, and again, if there's aspects, you know, again, to your point, if there's, you know, dimensional changes in a redevelopment that hit XYZ, you know, again, as, as the mayor pointed out, we're always concerned too about liability. We don't want to come across as arbitrary and capricious. So we want very defined standards of when something has to occur. You know, if that requires, you know.
We get it, Neil, go ahead.
So I have to say, I'm very uncomfortable with the direction that this council is going so far in this discussion, in that this is the very part of the city that is most in need and most likely to be redeveloped in going forward, as I think you pointed out, Rob. And that since we don't have, we can't manufacture land, we're going to have to go denser. And I think as Greg pointed out, what we don't, if, if that's our vision for what happens, that has to happen in this part of town, we have to encourage development and not discourage it, not throw roadblocks into place. So I'm very comfortable with what you've already outlined and I'm very uncomfortable with suddenly council weighing in because of one particular building situation that went in a direction that we, you know, that we, that was unfortunate. So I, I'm not, not on board with the, the direction that we're going so far.
All right, so, oh, go ahead.
And I, I just want to say, I usually disagree, usually agree with Jim McNulty, especially about Saquon Barkley coming to the Eagle. But in this case, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with the, with the thought of, you know, throwing more roadblocks in an area where we need fewer roadblocks.
Okay, can I just, very quickly, Mr. Mayor?
Very quickly, I want the planning commission to speak to it.
Understood, absolutely.
They're having too much fun watching us.
They are. No, and I agree with Councilmember Harris that this is one of the most important areas that we need to focus on, which is why I don't want the council to give up the oversight responsibility that we have. I mean, I have heard from constituents, why did not, why did the council not have the ability to weigh in on what was happening there? And this is the part of, this is the process. This is where the sausage gets made. Like, maybe we should. And, and that's what we're trying to address here, is how do we figure that out? And perhaps part of it is the way that this district, that the CBD, and then the Old Town Special District was carved inside it. Because really where the, the conflict existed is where this came in direct, where it touched directly the Euclidean zone. If you look at the central district, the CD, the corridor district, we have a residential buffer next to it. We don't have a residential buffer against the CBD. So if we're looking at height, perhaps we need a buffer to then assuage some of these concerns about, you know, create some kind of a step down.
Okay, Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to weigh in with Neil because the discussion, and I'd love to, the discussion of if we're working to answer the question from, of why the council didn't have the authority to weigh in at a certain point, that's, that's not what we're talking about here. That's a whole other ballgame of changing regulation ordinance of how council works. That's, that's not rezoning. We've got, that answers, for me, that answers a different question. If we're trying to answer that question, why council, why they didn't have the authority to weigh in, that's not this, in my opinion.
Okay, let's, let's table this exact debate for now. And I want, I want to hear from planning commission on whatever parts of this presentation. John, go ahead, or whoever.
If you don't, I will. So I suggest you do it.
Let me back, let me back into a couple of more benign items.
Okay.
So for parking, you were talking about demand analysis. We know what it's like with traffic and roads. Is there an industry standard for demand analysis on parking that we can expect? Or is it going to be one of these things where somebody camps out and counts cars and tells us that and we take that as the study?
No, no, I totally. So in retool, so we worked with DPW. So Engineering Services Director Fields, you know, came up with the parameters and it spelled out in retool what it's to include. It's more than just the old-fashioned parking survey where you walk out, you know, three times a day for seven days and you think you have it set. There's a lot more quantifiable and industry standards. But there's not, you know, an MUTCD manual on these are the established parking ratios, especially since, as Joe mentioned, all parking's local.
But I, I don't believe that the proposed zoning in front of you lays out the standards for that analysis. I think we intended to keep them as a separate document so they could be updated periodically.
But it exists. I mean, but the point is when we get something like that and have to make findings, it's not just, you know, whatever, pulled out of the sky, okay. I'm backing into this just so, you know, non-in enclosed outdoor storage spaces. What, what is that? I mean, what, what, where does that show up on a site plan and what, why are we even worried about it?
It's the Lowe's or the Home Depot with their outdoor storage of mulch or plants, garden centers, things like that, right?
Colons with a roof, but no walls.
The way it's coded, the way we have drafted currently, it would all have to be enclosed all the time now, with a fence or some of enclosure. We realized after this, meeting with some of the landluc's attorneys, that that may have been a little too far to require maybe mulch outdoors and at Home Depot to be enclosed. We realized after this, meeting with some of the land lease attorneys, that that may have been a little too far to require maybe mulch outdoors and a Home Depot to be enclosed. So, but we, we wanted to allow an avenue out and that's, that's the change we're proposing is allow the planning commission to grant that on a case by case basis.
Okay, now I'm headed for CBD. My appeal to you and you all is this, is nothing discretionary when the planning commission decides. So if it's going to be stories, findings on a proposed development in CBD, my proposal to you is that there is in fact a by right ceiling on height and whatever other parameters are, you know, we ordinarily look at for a building on a site. Not necessarily site, not necessarily setbacks, but something that's, that's formulaic. Now, it doesn't have to be three stop, it can be something else that gets us, gets us into it. But at least we have something codified that gets us there without feeling like it's just discretionary. Cause I, I don't like that word, you used it a couple of times and I don't think that's appropriate for us. But then, what I'm proposing is the framework for what's possible then becomes something like, be careful here. It, it would get a higher level of scrutiny at a, at a political level, political with a small p, right? I mean, it's, it would be, it'd be, it would be the discretionary policy piece that could then be applied and get nine stories, get, you know, whatever it might be. That, that's my proposal. Because I think, I think we do want to separate the stuff that would be influenced by more of a political process and the stuff that's influenced and has made findings in an objective and, and specific way that could be defensible and appeal could be defensible with our, our written, um, you know, resolutions, whatever, whatever we end up doing for some of these, these site plans. And, and I think MXD sets up a model for us in a way. I mean, that, that's, that's the separation, right? Whatever the, whatever the, the CBD moving forward is. But my asterisk on this is, I think the only problem we had was just a master plan miss. I think, I think there was this issue that there was an adjacency that just didn't, it was a detail that was never covered at that more global level. And that's what caused the, caused the kind of confrontation. When you back out and look at all the opportunities for that to happen, I think there's only two, you know, or something. I don't think it's a, it's a pervasive issue. I think it's a couple of specific adjacencies that we just never accounted for in the graphic version of the master plan, which tried to understand where things started and things stopped.
Graphic analysis never lined up with a six story.
Exactly, and, and it might be simple, as simply as, as soon as we can get to it, look at the, look at the master plan and account for that kind of stuff, which is, it's really, that's all it is, it's adjacencies. I don't think there's anybody that argues with a six story building in Old Town. They argue with a six story building that's next to a quaint house, home, right? And that's the issue. So it's not really the zone, it's the master plan and, and the, the understanding of how the geometry works within our city. So my proposal is that you don't get too hard and hot and heavy on the actual CBD requirements, but we get, get into a tool that could then fix the problem we've encountered.
Reasonable as always, John Bauer. Who like to go next?
May I throw you some Mardi Gras beads?
I want to revisit the ADU just briefly. For consistency's sake, in a dwelling, the way it's worded right now, it's 49% of the dwelling's square footage. However, if it's a separate entity, a separate ADU, it's 800 square feet. Why not make it a percentage of the square footage of the main dwelling? And that way you're more consistent, because if you had a three car garage, uh, which do exist in this, in the, in the city, and you want to put a, an auxiliary dwelling on top of that three car garage, you're restricted to 800 square feet. That doesn't make any sense. If, if you've got the dwelling, the main dwelling, let's say is 3,000 square feet.
But we also have dwellings that are 900 square feet. So a percentage, right, carrying a percentage across, you would have ADUs that would never be built because they're too small. Again, staff's perspective on the detached, because these are to be accessory and not already integrated essentially into the massing of the primary structure, is 800 square feet because that's the average size of a one bedroom apartment.
But if you've got a 900 square foot house and you want to build an auxiliary dwelling and you get 800 square feet above whatever, that's going to, that's going to overpower the, the primary dwelling, I would, I would assume.
Wouldn't that be capped at the 49% of the main?
We can make it that it can be capped. But again, by and large, the concern is, it is difficult, given the complexity of our housing inventory, to come up with a standard percentage. And if we begin doing, well, we're going to do a range. So if your house is this to this, you get this. But then if somebody does an improvement on their home because of the other things we're doing with retool, that now changes the ADU. So this is why it was easier to do the percentage for the existing primary structure and then what would be a one bedroom apartment, which can facilitate a couple, um, as an ADU. So again, the goal is not to have two dwellings. Yes, my hypothetical of 1,200 square feet with 800 or 900 and 800, you know, sort of goes against that, but that is the anomaly. That by and large, that is not really what our housing inventory would show.
And if you're in a floating zone, you can still do an amended final site plan. We do. And do your three star, you know, into a 40,000 square foot tower. If you wanted, it's, it's a, you know, if it's an approved.
Shorter than the main house.
Yeah.
Welcome to the dais, Carol.
Thank you, thank you very much, Judd and everyone else. So this is just in the context of retool and that the last zoning update was 1965.
Comprehensive, yeah.
Comprehensive, so that was 50 plus years and we're doing the comprehensive now. So I'm just looking for the definition or timeline for three terms. One, and this is related to the transportation and the parking spots. So the first one is demand analysis. That, at my understanding, that would be your, your current statistic, macro trend, how many years out is that? And what is considered to be long range? And then to start, then the reason I'm asking this question is because it took us 50 years to get to this point. So are we looking at a 50 year window future based on these terms? And so that's why I'm asking this question.
No, that's a good point. And I think the terms here lay out what it is, but as we sort of mentioned in this, this is where the review comes from Department of Public Works. So they're going to define the scope, much like with our traffic impact regulations. We have similar terms, but it begins with a scoping for review by, you know, our traffic engineers and everything else. So this would be a similar thing. So the demand analysis by and large is, hey, this is our use, here's what industry says, here's what our experience has been. This is why the ratio does or does not align with what's in the code. The micro trends, again, if we see something coming down, again, the advent of EV spaces, the advent of drop off, pick off, these are like micro trends. Long range can be anything, you know. Our terms, you know, sometimes we look at it, you know, either five, 10, or 20 years out.
Okay.
So again, I think it's going to be contextual to the project before DPW to review this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Matt, anything from any, Phil?
I'll, I'll just add to the CBD, I tried not to. John's exactly right. I think if you want to, if you want to create a level playing field, not pick winners and losers, not do the illegal by state law thing that you're sort of dying to do, you really need to do a master plan. Really need to redo your master plan and make it clear, make it predictable, make it a level playing field. Which we thought we did, you know, 15 years ago, but evidently we didn't.
Point taken. I can speak on behalf of the council. We're not dying to be arbitrary, we're dying, we're, we're not dying to be anything. We want, we want to welcome redevelopment and foster it. And, you know, we're, but we're sensitive to the political things. You guys had to deal with a couple of very intense meetings that I think some may say rightfully belong to us because we're the political people. And you guys, you guys had to deal with it. So part of it was that, I, I looked at that, I'm like, they shouldn't have to go through that, it should have been us, but.
But for the record, we don't want to do anything illegal.
Phil, did you want to add anything?
No, one of the advantages to keeping your mouth shut and waiting to the end, everybody else makes all your points and asks all your questions for you.
Fair point. I, I do happen to think that Chair Bauer's suggestions were reasonable. It may, it may actually sort of thread the needle with what we're all saying here, which is a combination of get to the master plan, but also maybe bring mayor and council for certain height waivers, right? Am I characterizing that correctly, John? Yeah, okay, I want to open it up to the public. And there, I'm counting one member of the public in the room right now. Do you want to testify, Patrick? Yeah, come on up.
I didn't think I was the only one earlier.
You are the only one. So state your name and address for the record and go right ahead.
Sure, so my name is Patrick Stoll. I live off of Highland Avenue and I'd like to first agree with Councilmembers McNulty and Wu, their points about oversight. I know that there's been a lot of points since I wrote this down earlier about that kind of Parks and Brook situation. But I feel like commenting on it is important because I was the one getting crushed in the parking lot by the developers with quote, "We don't need you anymore and you should just go home." So my point on the CBD thing, and I agree with Chair Bauer about bringing it into a master plan discussion. Commissioner Hopkins about making a, a fundamental process of the people who, as a constituent, that Councilmember McNulty mentioned, the people whom we elect with the responsibility, I feel like there should be some sort of trigger, not to necessarily say, "Oh, the public is mad about it, in comes the council." Like, that's not necessarily what I'm saying, but in significant things where it is frankly, a matter of public interest for just more involvement. I've always been a pre redevelopment, a pro redevelopment person. It just has to be done the right way and the right thing in the right place. And it was a situation where it's the right place for development, but it might not be the exact right shape. And just one more check and balance might have helped it turn into the right thing. Not to say like, tear them down, get the developers out of here, someone else, like, not to say, let's make more roadblocks, but let's just make it so that we can shape it into something that, as I said from the very first planning meeting about it, was, let's make it the right thing for both sides. And that's what I was talking to the developer about and they got what they wanted. So I do have a couple of quick questions, and I know this might be tricky with the time allotment, but one, um, I addressed open space in my last time, but also stormwater management. So do stormwater management facilities in plans count as open space? That's one. And two, is there a requirement in open space that dictates a certain percentage that needs to be green space, usable space, native plants? And there, is there strict definition to prevent leeway and loopholes in implementation? The whole point of stormwater management is that isn't, that is not usable open space. That's open space. There's not a building there, but there are specific, that is a specific structure that had, that is used. That is not usable, that is used. So just some questions there to kind of get the room thinking about. So thank you everyone for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I will, I'll slightly push back on one point. Sometimes stormwater facilities can be, like the lake at Rio, for example, is, I mean, there are boaters in it, but I mean, it's used. It's kind of, it's part of the view, it's part of the charm of the place. But Rob Robinson, do you want to answer any of that?
Sure. Again, as, as was mentioned two weeks ago, so we're changing the name from green to open because we were getting people getting misconceptions that it dealt with planting, it doesn't. And the definition has not changed and it's open. So what it's to deal with is for active and passive recreational areas or, or just in, in general. So that can be, you know, an expanded pedestrian realm to allow congregation, that can be a planted bed, that could be a lake, that could be tennis courts. You know, it's all of that. So it's really looking at the definition. And the function of this is not to try to mandate specific environmental facets, it's a livability issue. It's, you know, it was an outgrowth of the MXD and it came in there to make sure that comprehensive developments take into consideration the needs of their workers, their residents, students, everybody else. That there's places to get out of, you know, false lighting, that they have the ability to go out. So it can be active or passive, it could be planted or not. That's really what the intent is. It even says in the definition, those areas that are inaccessible can't count towards it. Parking lots can't count towards that. People congregate in parking lots, they don't get to count that as open space. So it's really looking at the things. Stormwater management has a whole section of the city code that talks about it. So, you know, the requirements there and how stuff gets planted is there. We still have Forest Con on the books. So, you know, there's required, you know, that you have to have those things. As, you know, Joe has proffered and we had discussed in, in a lot of these Euclidean zones, we have, you know, mandatory maximum impervious surfaces. So obviously, anything above that is going to be, you know, something different and traditional and green. So it's really going there. We're not changing the intent, we are just affirming the intent. And the way we look at the plans is, you know, whenever we look at these and do the calculations for required, now what we call open space. It's really looking at the usability. Who is it serving? Is it contributing to the sustainability and resiliency of the development and the application? It is allowing people to come together in this city? Is it allowing people to decompress from their day to day lives as they walk on a path? Whether they're looking at a forest, a tree, a planted bed, or statuary in, in an artist park? All of that is open space.
Thank you, okay. Before we adjourn here, I just, I want to get clarification from the council. I think, getting back to CBD, I really think that Chair Bauer put forth sort of an elegant compromise that would, that would create a threshold, which would be based on height waivers, that would involve the, the mayor and council in that case. And I, I'm just curious, among the council members, sort of by nod of heads, like, how many are okay with that? With, and not necessarily writing it here, but you guys get the point, you can.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so a fundamental change could be height or it could be square footage or whatever the case may be. So, but, but I agree with Commissioner Hopkins that, you know, it should not be for us to pick winners and losers. There has to be some kind of objective standard. But I, I don't think it's just height as well, because if you take a thousand square foot building and put a hundred, a hundred thousand square foot building, sorry, this thing is, that's the kind of fundamental change that I think should come to us for review. Now, where that line is drawn, I don't know.
That's why we have Zone Code.
Yeah, okay, so, but you guys, you feel like you got some direction there, right? Okay. Okay, we will leave it to the professional staff to sort that out. And we're all available to you individually if you want to, if you have any questions about it. Okay, any, anybody have any final words here or?
Park is still on daylight at any time.
I know, I know. I was just thinking we were, we were doing great on time, it's only like 8:18, but.
It hasn't been said tonight yet, but what a remarkable job you guys have done on this package.
Yes.
Congratulations on that and thank you for that. And it's, we're, we're in the, we're in the weeds now and that's, that's a good thing.
We just addressed like the four most difficult topics in the, in the whole thing. And it's a, it's a large document, so great job, guys. All right, so I will invite everyone to join us at our St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday at 10 a.m. at Rio. It starts over by Uncle Julio's and it's a five minute track over, it makes right towards Target and it goes left to Coles and it's done.
Full excitement.
Yeah, we have, we are honored to have the grand marshal of the parade here at the dais is John Bauer. Yeah, give him a round of applause. And when you see him Saturday, applaud again. So please join us, it's, it's a lot of fun. And, and next meeting of, next regular meeting of mayor and council is Monday, March 18th, 7:30 p.m. right here or on Zoom. We will see you all soon. Let's do great things Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.